Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. All members are present and accounted for. Would everyone please stand and join us as we say the pledge?
I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their beloved Georgia. One nation under God, in this law with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's a busy agenda tonight. This is our organizational meeting. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Hannah?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Okay. Hannah? And Bill on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, we'll begin by the election of officers. Please note that anyone can nominate and a second is not required for the election. So at this time, I'll open up the nominations for the board chair.
I'll nominate you, Bob, for board chair.
Oh, so great.
Nomination for Bob is board chair. Are there any other nominees? Are there any other nominees? Other nominees? Okay, we'll close the nominations and Bob is elected board chair by acclamation. Thank you, everyone. Nominations are now open for the position of vice chair.
I'll nominate Brenda.
Brenda has been nominated as vice chair. Are there any other nominees for vice chair? Any other nominees for vice chair? Third and final call. Anyone nominating besides Brenda for vice chair? Nominations are closed. Brenda, by acclamation, will be the vice chair for the upcoming year. Thank you, Brenda. Election of the clerk, delegating statutory duties to the office of business affairs. Nominations are now open for the office of clerk.
I'll nominate Katie Lockner.
Katie has been nominated by Brenda.
I'll second.
Any other nominees? Any other nominees for clerk? Third and final time, any other nominees for clerk of the school board? Okay, by acclamation, Katie is the clerk for the upcoming year, for the present year of 20.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Election of the treasurer, delegating statutory duties to the office of the business affairs. Nominations are now open for treasurer.
I'll nominate Anna.
I'll second.
Anna has been nominated. Are there any other nominees? Anyone else nominee for treasurer? Third and final time, any other nominees for the treasurer position? We'll close that. Anna has been elected as a treasurer by acclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, we have two pages. I was told that I could seek help on this. I'm a little confused on the, what's going on. Next, we're going to establish the date and meeting place, the time and meeting place for board meetings. As you know, we're on the second and fourth Monday at 6:00 P.M. And there are other scheduled times. And we don't meet all the time, but please look this over. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about meeting times?
If you go towards the back, Winston.
Page 21.
Of course, there are times that we cannot meet because it coincides with a holiday. And in some cases, if the holiday finally falls on a Sunday, we cannot meet on a Monday, for example. But these are the, these are the meeting times. Do we have a motion to either accept or discuss?
I'll move to approve the meetings.
Brenda's motion is to approve the meeting dates as are typical, typically done?
As typically done, or in the...
The ones that are in here.
Yeah, as shown, I guess.
The schedule that's shown.
This, so on this one, it says the 23rd, March 23rd. And I'm not sure how I'm reading this.
Because we have a spring break this year.
Because of spring break?
Oh, we moved that to the... And there's five, there's five Mondays in March this year.
Right, so...
Was that the one that should read March 30th?
Yeah.
So it's switched on page 21 into March 30th.
So it is the 30th?
Yes.
Okay.
Brenda, you're okay with that? You made that nomination for that?
Yes, as amended.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Anna, so we have a motion and a second to accept the dates as shown on page 21 for regularly scheduled board meetings. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Selection of the official newspaper, item C. We've used the Beacon, that's our hometown paper. That gives us the best press we can get. So does anyone have any other official newspaper they'd like to nominate?
I'll move to approve of the Beacon as the official newspaper.
Katie, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Larry. Other discussion? All in favor of the Beacon as our official paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Designation of the official posting place for school board meeting notices in the district office and website. Another procedural thing, we post them outside of the district office and again on our website. Motion to approve?
Oh, my God.
Katie, on the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Designation of the depository in accordance with Minnesota statute 118a point 02. I'll need help on this one.
This is where the main funds are deposited to in a bank. And it's my understanding that Cannon Falls Area Schools has three banks that they rotate, rotate through every year. If you look on page 22, it has a schedule of what we're currently on. And currently, we have Community Resource Bank in this rotation.
Okay.
Okay, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Anna on the motion, Bill on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Designation of the board's legal counsel and authorized contacts. We use Ratwick, Roswick, and Maloney. The superintendent, district office personnel, and school board chair are the authorized contacts. We continue to use Ratwick. They've been good for us in the past, I think.
I would recommend doing that.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Brenda on the motion? Katie on the second? Any other discussion? All in favor of Ratwick as our legal counsel, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Establish the annual salary for board members. Currently, it's $1,250 per year, and they split it up twice. So anybody have anything on that? Continue with the same?
It's in there, so I think I'm looking at it more in the neighborhood of the majority of the areas, so I move to keep it the same.
Page 23.
Yep. Motion by Bill to keep it as it has been last year.
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Authorization of the impressed fund.
The impressed fund is a petty cash, small amount of discretionary funds in the form of cash used for expenditures, or it's not sensible to make any disbursements by check because of the inconvenience and the cost of writing, signing, and cashing the check. And generally, it's under $100.
It's a necessary, isn't it, impressed fund? I mean, it's...
It is good for buying items that it would cost us more to write a check than it would to actually probably get the item.
That's right.
Okay.
Look for a motion to approve. Motion by Bill.
A second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Payroll authorization for use of facsimile signatures on payroll and voucher checks in accordance with the statutes listed. We just need a signature, right?
Yeah, it's approving the payroll authorization for facsimile signatures, or electronic signatures.
Yep. I hear a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Anna, seconded by Bill. All in favor of the payroll authorization as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution for combined polling place for 2021.
This started a couple of years ago, and the state is requiring that board members pass this each organizational meeting for the following year. To, if you would go out for a vote, if you had to do a special election and you combined all of your polling places into one polling item, you need to let the public know well in advance, and this is their advance notice of that.
So that's...
If not, we'll be organizing 10, 10 different townships.
River Road, or whatever, that's the location?
So we need a motion and a second, and then Katie, you'll be reading the resolution.
I'll move to where...
Brenda on the motion? Seconded by...
I'll second.
Larry? Other discussion?
I would say that the special election that we did do for Larry, the notice that went out because of Welch Township having their election was very confusing. I heard it.
Yeah.
I heard it, so I don't know.
And that is one thing that...
If it comes up again, we're going to have to look at that as far as a group before it goes out.
The notice itself was confusing?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we only have to do that once.
Right.
And now we'll never have to send a postcard again.
Which will make it less confusing.
Unless they change that rule.
Well, and that's something that, if you're talking to a legislator, please remind them that special elections cost the districts a lot of money.
A lot of money.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. What part would you like Katie to read?
Yeah, what, I don't know. Do I just read the, all caps?
Yep.
Is that all I need to read, and then read the location, or?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution establishing combined polling place for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling place will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Our combined polling place is Cannon Falls City Hall, 918 River Road, Cannon Falls, Minnesota, 55009. So we'll need a vote. Brenda?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
That passes by a 6-0. Authorization of the superintendent to approve purchases up to $10,000. I think leading up to about two years ago, it was at $5,000, and it just, it was a necessary increase, and gives you the latitude to authorize purchases up to that amount, correct? Yes. I think we want to stay consistent with that and stay consistent with other districts who use that $10,000 as their template as well. I would look for a motion to approve that.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Bill. Is there other discussion on this?
Did you just say that this was the same as last year?
Yes.
$10,000, yeah. Okay, I just was, didn't register. Thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion? All in favor of the authorization for the superintendent, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to restate the 403B plan document. Am I on the right page for this?
Yes. And this action item is exactly as it is stated, that we have to restate the 403B plan document according to, I think it's a federal statute.
Yep.
And we have to do this once every...
Six years.
Six years, but we will be having this on here, probably have it on here every year so we don't forget it.
Sure.
Because once every six years is an odd time.
To remember it.
To remember it, yes.
And where is it when we have to restate it, or we just...
Does it just mean that we have to, we have to approve that, that we're using 40...
Yep, and he and her have done the work to restate that.
We don't need any documentation, anything like that. We just procedurally restate it.
It's more procedure than it is anything else.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the reinstatement of 403B plan document.
Motion by Katie. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Okay, here's where things get dicey for me. Now we're going to M, correct?
Yes.
Designation of the superintendent as our LEA representative and the Iowa for 2020. Refresh us on this, would you?
Few years back, the state created what's called the Identified Official With Authority for school districts. And school districts need to designate two people, usually one being the superintendent and one being the assistant to the superintendent. And what that does is that gives authorization for access to secure MDE websites and programs within MDE. And so, once the board gives that person authorization, that person has authority from MDE to give access to employees to gain those websites and programs for them to do their work.
Okay. Board recommends to authorize Jeff Sampson to act as the Identified Official With Authority and Lori Hansen to act as the Iowa, to add and remove names only for District 252.
Both Lori and Jeff for the Iowa?
Lori will be able to add and subtract personnel...
Okay.
From the list that I have, and then I approve the programs.
Okay.
Okay, motion?
Move.
Move by Bill to approve. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, committee assignments. Does anyone have any, any thoughts on a committee that they're either on right now and would just as soon switch, or something that they would like to give a try to? We're going to kind of reinstate our finance committee, which hasn't met in a while. And so I would, I would look for us to maybe split the finance and facility. I think over the last two years, nobody has met more than facility. So I think whoever takes that on, Dalton had it last time. I was thinking maybe it would be your, your swing this time, Larry. But for the most part, they meet 7:00 A.M., before school starts, before. But I think the finance is kind of incumbent for the, for the chair, and Bill has acted as an ex officio on finance for a non-voting member, but due to his employment, I think you can't.
Yeah, I can be an actual committee member, but I can be an ex officio.
As an ex officio, if, if we name a third person on there, Lori, are we in violation of anything? Does it? No? Okay. So Bill is an ex officio, doesn't count in the attendance scheme of things. That's what I was driving, we're okay.
And voting.
Okay, finance. I would like to be on the finance. We're meeting very shortly. Bill is an ex officio, can't make that next meeting. I'm ex. Larry did just step in there for that one meeting, gives him an opportunity to see how things tick. In addition to that, let's, let's open that up. Does anyone else, would anyone else like to be a part of the finance committee? Our meeting is January 23rd, I think.
Yep.
What time and date do they meet?
7:00 A.M.
And the 20, is it usually a certain day of the week?
It's as needed.
It's as needed, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I think we're going to probably look at, we have some decisions to make with our budget this year, so anyone who says, yeah, I'd like to step in the pool, would almost be required to be there.
I can't make a 7:00 A.M.
Okay. Does anyone else? Anna? Brenda, that's a tough time for you always. Larry, you have any interest in that?
I can be there.
Let's, you want to be listed as an alternate, or do you want to be there?
I'll be an alternate.
Okay. So on the finance committee, it will be Bob, Larry as the alternate, and Bill as the ex officio. Facility committee? Larry, would you like to tackle that?
Yeah, I can take it.
Okay. Larry's on the facility. Would anyone like to be the alternate?
I'd like to be the alternate.
Okay. Larry will be the liaison, and Anna will be the alternate. Please feel free to come to any meetings as, as they're posted. Third one was kind of a catch-all, curriculum, tech, and we tech committee. Anna, how did you find that to be on those?
Pretty manageable. The one thing I will say is we tech expects two members from each member school to be at every meeting, so it's not an alternate situation. So if you're on the we tech committee, we meet quarterly. It's usually on a Thursday evening in Zimbrota. But the other two, curriculum and technology, have met quarterly, and those are usually in the afternoon, but it wasn't, I didn't think it was... Originally, curriculum and technology were going to be one committee, and we realized early on that that just wasn't going to work, so they are two separate committees again.
Uh huh. And you don't find that over the top to be on both?
No.
Okay. So Anna will continue with the curriculum and technology and we tech, but we'll need a second for that quarterly meeting on we tech.
I would be interested in that, but the only thing is if, you said it's quarterly on Thursdays?
Usually, yeah.
Okay, because it might, it might conflict with GCED.
We usually know pretty far in advance, and I think they try to not have...
A lot of the schools are the same.
Have that problem?
Yeah, so they try not to have them be at the same time.
Okay, well, I'd be interested in.
Okay, okay.
And then maybe if I stay on GCD, if you would be an alternate if they do conflict.
Yeah, I'm an alternate on GCD.
Yeah.
Sure.
Picking up all of that, Lori?
Yeah, do you want me to take the word alternate off of Katie?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's...
We'll just have two.
Yeah, because you're supposed to have two?
Yep.
Okay, staff development, GCED, something you'd like to continue with?
I would love to continue with staff development, but I'm finding it very hard to get there by 3:15 on a Monday. We have a very high volume of surgicals on Mondays, so that's the only thing, I'm having a hard time getting there. And as, I can usually get there by 3:30 or 3:45, so I don't know what their preference is if they want, if that's okay. I would love to stay on, but I don't want to...
I think that's fine.
Miss too much.
If somebody else, if somebody else is...
Does it start at 3:15? It starts at 3:15.
I could be an alternate. Well, I am the alternate.
Yeah.
But I'm, will probably be at home on Mondays, so...
Oh. Or do you...
I'm going to be working from home, so...
Yeah, either that, or we could, even if you wanted to switch, and I could be the alternate.
Or you can take it cooperatively.
Yeah, or we could share it.
Yeah.
Because it's a very, I find it very interesting to see what they're doing to keep up with everything.
Yeah, I could be the main, and you could be the alternate.
Do you want to do that? Okay.
Okay, now do what?
We're gonna, she's going to do the main person, and I'm going to be the alternate for staff development.
So staff development is Brenda in the first chair, and Katie as the alternate. And then GCED, you're okay with that?
I'll stay, yep, I'll stay with that, that's fine.
And Brenda, you will be her alternate for that, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Transportation. Anna, you did it before, how do you feel?
Good. It's mostly been on an as-needed basis.
Yep, okay. Larry, would you like to alternate on that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And as she said, it's an, just kind of an as-needed, but...
I think we've met three times, so...
Community ed, way, negotiations, personnel, it's kind of a catch-all, I guess. We're just kind of finishing up our negotiations, well, our educator negotiations. We'll have others behind that, so I think it's kind of incumbent to continue with that. Katie, you're okay as alternate?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I can continue on for the balance of the year. Bill, are you okay as well?
Sure.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, community ed, ed foundation. We had Brenda and Bill on there. How did you feel about that? Good for you?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I don't think community ed met, as far as I know.
I think it's almost incumbent on us to just say we're going to meet.
As needed, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's good to refresh as to what community ed's up to, and I think a committee would be there, so I think we should almost push our community ed person to...
Have a meeting.
To get a rotation of meetings. So Brenda, you'll continue on in that capacity, and Bill, you'll continue on as alternate.
Yep.
Okay. And MSBA, the policy, and Minnesota State High School League Extracurricular Committee, I guess. You don't meet much, that's kind of an as-needed basis, and email, email you as necessary, I guess, for anything. And you're both okay with doing that once more?
Yep.
Okay. That will have no change. Is it something that we should be okaying by vote, or is that just, I guess, chairman assigns anyway?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody got your assignments? Thank you for plugging in one more year. Reports and communication. Is this a reports time? If someone wants to?
They want to.
Yeah?
That's just listed there, basically telling you that on the first meeting of the month, we'll...
That we have time.
That's more of reports than it is necessary to ask for reports. Okay?
I do have a quick update on a couple of items, if you guys are willing to listen to me.
I'm willing.
First of all, it's not on the reporter, but our admin team met today to discuss the strategic planning process and then start creating action plans for our five strategic goals that the board approved coming out of that. And so we had a lot of rich and very good discussion today, and the admin, some of the admin team members are here if they want to chime in. I guess that's up to you guys.
Yes.
You concur.
You concur.
I was saying, no, I don't want to.
You don't want to chime in?
I'm going to chime in.
I just like seeing the process. I've never been a part of a process where it starts at such a large level and kind of hones its way down, so I do agree it was rich conversations and just kind of helping us all focus on...
Well, I'm glad to hear we've taken that next step now already.
Yeah, it, it didn't go as fast as I anticipated, but I think that's okay, because we had great conversations. And I think those will go a long ways toward many different avenues, I guess, moving forward. Currently, we're in the spot where we've kind of organized out some action items for each each of the strategic priorities, and now we want to detail out each of those action items moving forward, and so, that's kind of where we're at right now, we have another half-day plan coming up in a couple of weeks, we'll see how far that gets us, and hopefully we'll bring back the final strategic plan, hopefully in February timeframe, if not early March, if we don't get it detailed out that way, so. Second item, career navigator position. I had mentioned this at a previous board meeting, that the Selke Service Co-op is providing a position for us through a grant that we were awarded, and we are partnering with three other school districts, GCED, Pine Island, and Zambroda, and we have hired a person, Dylan Mackey, who has, who will be filling the career navigator position for our four schools, and their job is to work with each district on organizing career programming with each, within each of the districts, and also go out and help collaborate with area businesses in each of the districts also to get more of that school and business connection moving forward, so. That position was hired shortly before the break.
So where is that person office at? Do you know?
Out of their car.
Out of their car.
Because they will be going from district to district, and then, you know, if they're, obviously here, we'll find a spot for them within the high school office. Yep, but the idea would probably be have them be here maybe half a day when they are here, and then out in the businesses for the rest of that time during the day, to interact with them and set up a multitude of things with the businesses about how we can interact together. I guess I don't have a good answer for what that looks like quite yet, but I would say, you know, anywhere from involving businesses in the school somehow through speaking and career fairs, to sending our kids out for job shadows and internships and whatnot, so. The final thing I want to report on is to give an update on the McGillis Tree Project. As you are aware, the McGillis family is willing to make a donation, and their idea in their mind was some sort of a tree plot donation for the school district. We are currently moving forward here with another meeting in January. We have engaged with the DNR, and we do have our forest area kind of marked out in GPS. Back in this area here, there is a forest with trails through it, and a learning area that is designated, we did a lot of learning during one of our meetings about what's actually back there and what the potential is, and so the DNR and Dwayne Pliscott and Dave Peterson have all been coordinating together to put together maps of what that would look like and bring ideas forward to present to the group coming up here in January, so we are moving ever closer to seeing what the culmination of that would look like, and then hopefully we'll have that brought forward after we finish that up, so. Other than that, that's all I have, no questions.
So, anything for the cause, elementary principal, middle school, high school principal, anything you'd like to?
Not a whole lot, coming off of Christmas break, Pedis for Patients has picked up our previous leader, Ms. Catterlick, collecting coins for blood cancers, and so that's in the month of January. Literacy Committee's been hard at work for Literacy Night, February, I think it's 18, thanks. So we have author Nancy Carlson coming, and that February is I love tree month, so aside from that, all is calm.
All is calm. Mr. Hodges, anything?
Friday's the end of the semester, so we have our, our high school students are, will have final schedule on Thursday and Friday. We're already working on registration for next year, so you barely get into a year before you start thinking about the next year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving down, public input. Does anyone wish to speak to the school board about anything germane to the district? In short, you have an opportunity to speak for three to five minutes on areas of concern? Moving along. Action items. Under the new biz, consideration to review the 200, 500, and 800 series. Says no additional changes to policies, so we're just stamping the policies that are in place, correct?
Yes, one of those policies actually says that we have to keep our policies in a three-year rotation, and a few years back, we decided to do it this way, in sets of three, every three years.
And again, anytime anyone from the community wishes to, or any board member, they have access to all of our policies online on our website, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, does anyone wish to discuss this? If not, we'd look for a motion to approve the cycle.
We'll move to approve.
Moved by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve Policy 104, District Mission Statement.
This is an item that's reviewed each year, obviously we just got through with this process, and so we'll keep this on the organizational agenda each year to review our mission statement.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve Policy 104.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Consideration to approve a donation of $400 from the Cannon Falls Fire Department for the relighting of the candle, our elementary school newspaper.
Yes, the Cannon Falls Fire Department has a generous donation of $400 to relight the candle, which is ironic within itself, when you have the fire department relighting a fire. So, I would full-heartedly recommend that the board approve this, the $400 will go toward needs supplies for this program, and we have volunteers for that program here tonight, and Ms. Catterlick and Ms. Wirtzus. I don't know if you guys have any questions for them, or if they want to make a statement?
Would you like anything to say? You just, thank you for doing this, by the way.
I think it's an opportunity for us to.
I was really sad when we had to not have it anymore, so I'm super excited that you guys get it back. So, I was really excited to see that when we, when I saw the agenda come out, so thank you guys for volunteering your time.
Thanks for the time and effort you put into it.
Thank you.
Okay, look for a motion to approve the donation.
Make the motion.
Motion by Anna.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Thanks again. Consideration to approve a medical leave from 12720 to 6420.
This is for Sue Samuelson, and it'll be through the rest of this year from January 27.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie. So folks, I think we're gonna be busy over the next couple of weeks, we've got a few things in the hopper. On a, on a committee basis, we've got the finance committee meeting at the end of the month, we have our MSBA convention very shortly, is that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Yes.
Correct.
Starting tomorrow.
That's, that's the passion we're looking for.
Excited.
And what else do we have going?
We have our. We have our MSBA meeting on January 22nd.
That's Wednesday.
Yep, and then bright and early Thursday morning, we have a finance committee meeting on the 23rd, and then our regular meeting on the 27th.
And, yep, our regular meeting is on the 27th at 6:00 PM, among the things we'll talk about, or okay, are the spring head coaches, you see that MSBA annual convention? It's a good deal, it's free to the district. I think we're the only ones in the country that don't have to pay for our annual convention. A good deal. So, you can see the other things, we'll be talking eventually about our dishwasher quotes, World's Best For Workplace Plan Document, and a resolution for the American Indian Ed Parent Advisory Committee. Anyone have anything for the cause? I think if I look at my staff, we are ready to adjourn. If no one has anything else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished, thank you.